We're just so grateful that you all are here and want to welcome you. For those I haven't met yet, I'm Melissa Kelly, the library director for the city. And again, we're so grateful for the time that you're taking out of your busy schedule to participate with us in this process and be part of the visioning task force. So thank you again for your interest and ability to join us tonight. It's wonderful. Um, it's a little bit of background. Hope you know, our library is an essential community resource for trusted information enrichment education. And as we look into the future, it's really important for the city to understand the residents' needs for the library, for our services, and the role of the library to continue to provide exceptional services into the future. And in early 2022, the city council set a goal to begin a process to address the long-term facilities needs of the library in response to community input. And so throughout 2022, library staff worked with the library advisory board to envision an inclusive public process to help address that goal. And in late 2022, hired consulting firm Barry Dunn. We have two members of the team here with us tonight to help us design a robust process. And we're now embarking on that multifaceted library visioning process, which is going to be guided by what we learned from our community, including you all. So thank you again. Thank you for the benefit of your knowledge and perspectives. The role of the task force, excuse me, the role of the task force is both to provide input and to help the consultant team synthesize community input over the course of three to four work sessions. And I think it's important to note that we're not asking the task force members to necessarily represent a particular point of view or a particular group in the community, but really to bring the many perspectives, the many hats that you wear, you know, maybe that's as a parent, a grandparent, a teacher, a community member, a newcomer to the community, a longtime member of the community. You know, someone who might be knowledgeable about different, different areas of services like health, social services, and areas like that. So we're very excited to have you all here and appreciate you bringing those different perspectives to help us again provide input into this process, but also help the consultant team to synthesize the community input that we're receiving through all of those other engagement channels. All righty. Okay, so I, we want to go ahead to some introductions. Again, want to introduce our consultant team member here. Sorry, because Barry Dunn is coming up first on the side.
Hi, Jason Ginn. And with Barry Dunn, it's helpful. Barry Dunn, I really am truly honored to be part of this meeting. Thank you so much from Melissa and team for bringing us in. We specialize in local government, particularly parks, recreation, and libraries consulting. We have 25 staff working remotely all over the United States, and we have seven of our staff total across the firm. My specialty is libraries, parks, recreation, community planning, and education. So just a little bit about me, and you'll learn more about me later, but it's more important to learn about you when you go first up tonight. But thank you so much for taking the time. Well, can I, can I, well, we have some quick meetings and you're all, thank you so much.
I'm Rose Metz. I am local. I live in the Portland area. I hold day in, library development nationally for a long time as a practitioner and then as a consultant for the last 20 years. I'm delighted to be here. Thank you for welcoming us into your community to help you coalesce and describe a vision, and that's our job is to do that. We're very excited to be able to do that and to work with all of you all of us and the library staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to introduce the library staff that are here. Nell Diamond, our library administrative assistant. And we also have Madison Feasing from the city manager's office, and then Alicia Yokiyama, one of our wonderful reference librarians here. And then we'll also go into introductions for all of our community members here. So we'll start with you, Brittany. Do you want to jump in first and ask everyone to share your name? How long you've been a member of the community? And briefly, why does this visioning project matter to you?
Yeah, my name is Liberty Plank. I have been a resident of Lakeview for about a year in California. Originally from California. And we've been in a large neighborhood in Portland with personal things like us to go. I have a two-year-old daughter, and I'm expecting another baby on the way in May, right after the next, the last fish exception. So hopefully it doesn't send me in flavor, maybe it does, I don't know. And when I saw this, actually on the Instagram of the library, I am in the city of Lakeview, I was really drawn to it. In my professional life, I am an experience designer, which basically means I'm constantly thinking about, I do it for physical spaces and also for virtual spaces, and just thinking, how do we bring people together? How do we create actual experiences? How are we thinking about how there are different people have different contexts when they come to some sort of experience? And so as a member of the community and a lover of libraries, my daughter is obsessed with books and we love, like us to the library, we love to go for reading time. And so I just love the idea of being able to give back to the community and especially the spirit that I love. Oh, wait. Thank you.
I'm here in Lakeview for over a year now. And it's one of the nice things because I'm already involved with the library and I love it. And I'd love to do more. I just love it.
I'm Heidi, and I love to read. So I think we're in the right spot. I grew up in Lakeview, so I've been in the number of years for a very long time. I moved back to start my own family. And the Lakeview library is a very special spot in my heart because it was where I was my first library card, my group going there and sent with my mom. And it's been so fun to be able to see my own daughter who's one, just over one, which is like real handy to find the speaker back and see her crawl around all the top shelves and develop a level of learning. So I just wanted to, I saw this opportunity to come back, get her come up, and I wanted to give back and a little understand also how other groups are using the library in my own perspective and really see how it could better serve our community.
I'm also on the library side or entirely as one to I like so have some return on two weeks ago. And what really good to see about this project is wanting to bring a think taller view where it's a lot of new perspective that I can afford and consider and can do that. But also just really, it's really interesting to me to know what places that I stand trying to report.
When I was moving here a few months ago, I was spending one, twelve years in the overseas. So one of our systems kind of in the gravity of our job is is the store. Well, two times the school ever even going to this perfect library, so that he can access this, but it's still finding ways to connect. I was really for that. And for years in grade, yeah, it's been great. We go very regularly to keep level. And in my work in schools as a counselor, the principal has been really true by how libraries of shooting first word with those two letters, media center.
My name is Lily Samo, and I've been in Lakeview for twenty plus years. I think it's nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety nine. And I'm with the state of the she called her very young and reading is my lifelong pattern. I haven't even by hearing any channels while I was doing the points with storyline and I'm on the level of certainly. And so I'm very blessed again, what the vision, like down the road, not only for books, etc., but also space, community space for events and communities to connect within this space. And I was talking to Nancy, the event planner. It's, she told me that there were some people who attended the middle of New Year's celebration. She's like, we were celebrating that the fire marshal would be there for just about like a couple of people. So if you're such a vibrant community, and I think that the library, you hold a raft of services, how high was the need to this community? And I'm really excited to be part of it and see how the position might look like in town shaking.
We're at outside Chicago, just here. We're at, we're at from outside Chicago.
Um, northwest, northwest, how like tonight?
They worked in Buffalo, we're up high in there. Twenty five years ago. Wow. Right before it.
Hey, everybody. I'm Happy of Menderans. I'm a renter. I grew up in Clope in this and then brought my last son to English and here to Lakeview here in 2009. I'm a professor of book publishing at Florida State and also a digital researcher to the communities. As a researcher, I am, I'm publishing with my writing partner, a couple of reports from the American Library Association. One's coming up this quarter, one's coming up next quarter. So I have some experience both as a researcher and also as a resident. I use the Lakeview library all the time. I love it. I have so many fun memories of my kids climbing on the bear statues after the most, uh, and doing storytime, reading those summer reading programs. I think that the programming is fantastic and we're so lucky to have this incredible resource. So I'm really excited to be here and listen and also, you know, share stuff about other libraries.
I'm Donna George. I have been in Lakeview, first moved here in the early seventies, left in seventy-nine and moved back in ninety-nine. And I've been on city council, I've been on city council for eight years. And part of my liaison work was with the library advisory board. I know how important the library has been in this community and actually to the surrounding community as well because of all the things that the library offers that they just don't have a place. So I'm fascinated to think about what the library will look like twenty, thirty years show down. I know my grandparents use libraries in the cities where they live and have, they're all getting so much older than their little ones, but and when you said the streets have changed, they're libraries. And that was another reason that I was interested in what this vision will look like. Because my husband was an old Portlander and went to Grant High School. And last year, they had a very big reunion for Grant High School. Everybody could come back and go through the brand new built Grant High School. And so we did, and their library is huge, but there are no books. There, there is a corner where there are some shelving and there were some books. And we asked, because students were leading us around, we asked about it, and they said, well, they do have reference books, but this is more of a place where you can get groups together, you can talk about your school work and what you're doing and putting papers together and things like that. And I was just, well, no. Because it wasn't like any library that I'd ever experienced. So I'm looking forward to this and thank you for allowing me to be part of it.
I'm Liz Hartman, and I moved here like seven years ago this week when I was pregnant with my daughter. And I've been coming here since nineteen sixty-three, visiting the family. It's great to see all of you. I've worked with a number of different committees. I'm the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce and elected member of the Lakeview School Board. And I love visioning. So I'm looking forward to bring all kinds of things together.
Hi, I'm Madonna Lisa Chan. My pronouns are she/her. And I've been in Lakeview for a little over a year, and I've been in the Portland metro area for about seven years. I also keep a couple of years. I am the product manager for tech company and I have a background initially in library science. So I care very deeply about libraries. I'm actually a second generation librarian. And I still call myself a librarian, although I'm in the high school. My, I don't do books, I do data. And the reason why I'm ready to get involved is I have two kids who just love, love the library so much. We're on the other side of Lake, and they're so motivated about coming to the library, they go live in the lights. I mean, the night not around in the middle of winter, just to come to the library. And both my kids are neurodiverse and one is hard of hearing. So there's a lot of things about library that connects them to people and ideas and things and other kids. And it's just exciting to see there. And I'm ready to give back to the community. So I'm really excited to bring my library back to the table and my kids' needs as well to share in it.
Hi, my name is Cindy Glazer, and I've lived in Lakeview for over thirty-five years. And the best fifteen years I worked at the Lakeview Library. I ran the volunteer program and I started Lakeview to go raise. And that's where I really saw the community really start loving the library even more. I mean, it was, it was an amazing experience. I retired three years ago, right before COVID, yeah, which some say was great. For others like me, it was very lonely because all the things I had, I didn't do nothing. He's going on all those trips and classes. So, but now I volunteer at the local theme to use bookstore that's in this building. And I still just love talking to people about books when they come in. So I'm thrilled to be part of the visiting of where we're going and it was a mini hobby.
I guess to be so proud of it. But I must be go seventeen ninety-six. My grandparents gave me business in here, started a little failure. My father got a baby business here, kind of Gemini, nineteen seventy-one. So lots of changes. So I have a vision and I love being part of this community. I have two children. Both are neurodivergent. And I also have two parents. So accessibility, inclusivity, and you know, that mechanism of the digital age that just swells upon me with my thirteen-year-old and eleven-year-old with my craft and books and all that. And I bought my house and I brought that down, I put down a table. I usually move in this door. And it's a real disconnect, I think, generational parity. Parents read, I need something to be decimal system stat. And so how do we create a place that bridges that gap of our crazy digital, super fast and plethora in your hands? So we will refer it to. But we know that it's not a library. It's visiting food, inclusivity, or community people for support. So I feel like we're doing, going to Lily Nelly or Safari and the library is a resource for them to bring. Everybody wants to be more. That's what we're like, break this. We're not going to be a librarian. I first time I went in there, they had a grand theater calling on balcony. And that's the main thing, my life, there's no other place to have access to that and knowing that it's in there. You can have a library and have direction and vision. See, that's where it looks beautiful, it's strong, the arts, literacy for kids. So excited to look at things with your way of vision. I have accessibility as well as just rambling and being able to park even inside. All of our community members that are advanced knowledge, it would be nice to be able to have the doors open. I'm always little. So, thank you.
Uh, my name is Eric Rapp. I've been here twelve years and I'm just, this is important, just to be in here with everybody who wants to be with our library system.
My name is Kanan McFarren. I have two kiddos that are thirteen and so thirteen now and twelve. And I, we have a library, they're a little girl and there's a reader who went there for the same thing. But I see checks. Three years. Full year because they tried to substitute three years and fully for older. And I have coordinated and attended the program and calling in, it's really pretty important to me that the kiddos love reading and that based on how I think all this happens in college, see that the library is having physical books in your hand and a place that community is so important. And I'm concerned that maybe that that's not the way that we're going. But I want to see that day alive, so.
Hi, I'm Katie, and we've been in Lakeview for about fifteen years. We have three sons that I homeschool. And so we have been accessing the library since they were little bitty. So from storytime to now, I was telling Katie, we seem to be a little more flyby. We are really good about putting food on hold. So we come in and we check out in the barn, but but we have familiar faces there and it's a place, somebody said about belonging, but there's a place, it's a grounding and a way to see people that you know and that know you. Even though we're doing a lot of cold stuff, we have been introduced to incredible ideas and authors and stories because that's what librarians do. And so in talking to our librarians and just saying, you know, what should we be reading? What are we reading? They've really been able to expand all kinds of ideas. And so there certainly are lots of lovely programs that do that too, but we've been able to do that through books alone and some of the programming. Everybody talked about Kate and her kids to library. My mom visits, she's from Texas. She'll stay with us for long periods of time, and she's a huge user of the place in the library. She's been known to take a book home and never went back. Just because, you know, she can read it at home. So she loves our library too in terms of all ages, but people have submitted texts back.
Well, thank you so much. It's really wonderful to have you all here as part of this process and to hear what, what drew you in to, to be with us for this process. So thank you again. All right. And then right here, we have a short video. This was produced by Every Library. And I think Nell has to hit play on the video. We're ready for you to hit play on the video. Yeah.
You need a better move of this, you need to stay closer or anything like that. Just remember, you can point your screen over on the sign and you'll be able to get up to the computer.
We're gonna come back to it. Hopefully you can watch the bowl and move on and fly. I promise you, the video did work right before you walked in. What did you clearly touch the computer? Fourth time, uh, this is a thing about that. But, but it was actually, it's have a nice icebreaker and kind of sets tell on first thinking about visioning and hopefully clears out maybe, I'm sure it's a busy day, getting into that kind of idea of visioning. So so we're gonna jump ahead ever so slightly in the end last, um, good to highlight some of the key findings. We'll come back to the slide, I can already imagine. Mostly a great job providing an overview. And I'm sure you know, a little bit of brush the ratings from the correspondent tonight for feed. But, you know, we think that it's important really to describe. Actually, as I'm saying that, I'll pause because it looks like the video is about. So great, covered up quick, didn't we now? I mean, by that, I mean you. Okay, we can go ahead, Brett. Thank you now. I appreciate it.
Yeah, anyway, we're
So thanks again, Nell. I appreciate it. I think we had to open up a different slide deck to make sure it ran. So we'll, of course, it got fast. It's already, it's already popped up on the stream. But looking back to the purpose of, of the couple of projects, we just wanted to take a moment briefly to make sure that we dedicate on some of the key goals on the visioning project. And I think it's really important, we we're careful to continue to say vision because that is the goal. And we're really excited to begin with you. So if you can pick off of that, it just had four chairs this evening. Thank you. So you may have seen already and corresponded that we have. So it's going to get a reminder for how this evening is, oh, we're focusing. You know, when we have community forums and our server sessions, because you'll learn more about later, which are rather encompassing, people have all the ideas of what the project might be about. And we want to continue to remind folks and bring them along that journey. remind folks and bring them along that journey of visioning with the community. The specific goals, hopefully you may have seen these again, but just to reiterate them, a shared community vision of the future of the library. Understanding residents' current and future needs, services, facilities, amenities. And I've heard a lot of folks say that earlier. I felt why they wanted to be involved, which brings great. And determine the library's role in addressing community challenges. Our process that we use, where we start at a high level, looking at all communities. In fact, we're gonna start this evening is is more about communities in general, whether the library has a role in them or not. We're gonna figure that out. But we also find that to be a good process to make it accessible for discussions of what do you mean challenge of the library? And I get everyone's room sounds like they've had really good experiences with the library that happen. If you want to take a step back and start what are the challenges currently in the future for your community? But what about the community engagement? We've already started this process of of our approach of the community engagement and a large part of the visiting project is back learning from the community really about what their what their shared vision. That doesn't mean we have a agreement on everything. We certainly have extremes of interest and whatnot. And we've seen that already, but that's okay. We'll be looking at developing themes and tracking. Here we're listening very closely with the community. For example, we already started discovery sessions. Virtual one-on-one and group interviews and we have over seven hundred points feedback just from those. Last night we had our first community forum and several folks from the audience were there and we're really just getting started. You're gonna see a lot more about the engagement. In fact, we hope that you are a partner with us. Meaning that I know based on what everyone said, how involved you are in the community, I know you have a lot of contacts. We would love you to in any way possible. We brought some samples collateral with you a lot more, things like bookmarks, flyers, postcards, those who pop up stationary interactive opportunities all over the community in the coming weeks. The centralized website called Social Pinpoint. I bet people have heard that on there just based on the traffic I'm seeing really. So we're also, I should say that are here this evening. We're working locally with Dr. Christine Moses. We really specialize. We're very fortunate. You happen to live in your community, which awesome. We've been working with Dr. Moses even for another project, but she's really specialized in helping us making sure we're having a holistic approach and connecting with the entire community. So it's an honor to be working with Dr. Moses and also our
David Mark, Portland's global architect and has actually done work on your library. So he's on our team too. And David is probably during part of the scope of the work. Of course, this all is about vision. It isn't about solving everything. It is about coming up with how we're gonna do it. It's crafting one vision for the future, taking into account that the challenges and the needs and where this community sees itself going and wanting to go. And so part of our process will be taking away, especially from this group, what roles you see for the library. Once we talk about vision more, there will be probably around three major roles. We'll be working with Melissa and her staff to take an inventory of how well positioned is the library now? When you look at that, those roles that you see, when you look at what the library would need to be as part of the community to help achieve that bigger vision for the community. And we'll be doing that assessment in four resource categories, staffing, collections, technology and facilities. And David Mark will be the main person who's going to be doing an assessment of existing library. And we're pulling out and that being especially interesting piece of the conversation at our next session. Next month. So that is, we'll, we'll bring you back what we find and we'll just kind of keep leaf blonging together down the road to what will be a total of four sessions.
Yeah. So thank you. And as an example, the initial preliminary findings from the engagement, you're gonna have a quite robust update the next at what meeting, typically past course number two, and we're not done with engagement at that point, but we could have a pretty robust update to have an idea of what the community is talking about there. There's one or three things you take away from tonight. On the most effective, the coolest seminars, you wanna help inspire more conversations around the process. By the way, one other interview that should be interviewed that's not here, he will be here the next meeting, J R Plant. He's been very done. He's one of my team members. He actually leaves the library work. But don't worry, I actually, I leave March Revolution Libraries the entire practice. So you're here hopefully you could answer hopefully, but you'll meet J R's the next next meeting and he's really great work. And so let me give you a couple of samples. We've got samples of things here this evening. Some things are not common cards, bookmarks, flyers, and if you're working with your local brick shop, don't worry about running out of materials. If you want to leave stacks of them at the chamber, let's say you have meetings and things like that. If there's businesses that will sign up for fishing boards, things like that, really, really easy to do. Without that collateral to you to make it really easy. Just simply giving it out in the community, we would really appreciate that. Give you a little bit of samples. The next one, I believe is the okay, there's a still writing profile, but the company folks then on the website, it will be called Social Pinpoint, meaning that the one that has survey and the awards by Joel and a minute of that hopefully this evening, they're gonna write on our site.
You are gonna go straight to it.
It's pretty cool. And I want to be clear, that's certainly not the only way we're getting it. We get that set a lot. We're not. That is however, one central location to get updates on the schedule, on slide decks, what's going on. But once you go on there, there's also community conversations happening. So we encourage people to come back, not once, but come back again to create more conversations and find out what their neighbors and friends and community are talking about. So I'm really excited about having that platform.
Do you have additional assets of these rather than leaving stacks around than our place to provide listservs?
Yeah. And we're using the neighborhood listservs like you mentioned, as well as library database, the recreation database, and a nine thousand. And we met the recreation director today and we're all that all said, we don't have it all covered. So ideas you guys have, we're, we're pretty good. Better than we do. So if you have ideas on opportunities and certainly you would share that with me before sending anything for your approval to show you what that is. And you have to do that. So in fact, one of the questions we're gonna ask you about going tonight is gonna be, and I'm going what are some possibilities you might have that we need to make sure. And then following up with the appropriate collateral will make sure you're ready to go. Maybe use the idea to distribute that. Good stuff. So let's go into the little bit of work in the community.
Okay. Before you do, I just wanted to cover a few housekeeping things really quick. Just to let you all know, we do have breaks planned into the agenda. Restrooms are right out the doors in our own corner. Need those. Like if you haven't grabbed food yet or need more food, there's some over there on the side. So just wanted to make sure everyone had those details before we keep going on the presentation.
By the way, if you didn't know, there's a nice water bottle refill station under those facilities too. So I thought I'd sell it. You may know that already. So we did a little bit of research and this is so early, but a little research finding community there, people are information measuring and bringing that data and you may have it according, for example, when the that's like on the chamber, the chamber or the city might have different information. Of course, we always want to call that. We always want to catch on a run, that's understand what are other ways to get it today and learn about. So just a couple of highlights, the things you probably already know, hopefully, that are connecting with you, we're gonna say as far as and I heard some of these descriptions when you guys were talking about your, your connection to the project. So a couple of initial things there to continue, please. And something demographic trends, you know, not reading all of these to you, but kind of get an idea of at least, at least what we're seeing so far from the Esri data. And kind of getting an idea of where, where is community going? And by the way, I could say these slide decks will all be available to you after the next. I see you can take notes probably. Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll make sure you have all those too. And again, I ask you, if there's something in here that you're thinking, wait a second, this isn't accurate or you have updated information with that, please go ahead and send it. We'll make sure you get an update. We will read the slide. The drive time analysis is, is not the only analysis that we use. From, and I know this is really hard to see where you're at. That's okay. Don't worry. In the next, we won't forget, but the next slide will show breakdown of kind of seeing, we look at a five minute drive time. That's kind of what you're seeing in that red area. But then we can that out for ten minutes or four and so on, give them an idea. And that's not enough. I know, for instance, there is one significant, and I think someone talked about right around the weekend, right? I mean, there's that. There's your accessibility type of things, but yet one of many indicators to see how people are be able to access a library and what are the standards, of course, if you're looking at a five minute drive time, it does matter. Go ahead and go back to that. There you go. This gives you a better analysis. You can actually see a little bit more clear from a five, 10, 15 minute distance to, to your library. Your library is located in a beautiful neighborhood, as you know. And there are constraints, partnering, you know, you know, all that, right? You can use some same work. We're taking in highly utilized. Really, you know, general other community, no question. And Melissa and staff truly do a great job of activating and making sure that providing best service possible. Some additional drive time metrics. This is interesting. This is going beyond just, okay, how many people in those areas to go a little bit deeper from what they were in house size, value, income. These are all things that we consider. Again, just a piece of the puzzle that helps us start learning as we look at other libraries, trends in the nation and why these matters. Just some initial data points that we refer to for the process.
Then I will try and be as brief as I can to bring my sides about the library. I could just tell you about the library for hours and hours, but I only have 10 minutes here. But here's our current mission statement. Together, we inspire discovery and cultivate well-being by welcoming all people to read, learn and connect. And some of our vital statistics, we serve a population of over forty-three thousand. That includes all the residents of La Cuciga as well as some of the non-incorporated community that's part of our service district. And we serve a very well-educated, active and engaged community. Over twenty-two thousand folks with active library cards with us, including more than three thousand new cardholders in the last year. Hundred and forty-three thousand annual visits to the library, almost eight hundred thousand items borrowed in the last fiscal year. And we answered over thirty-three thousand reference questions in the last year and had over sixteen thousand resident attend library events. So we're a very busy, well-utilized library. And some of you have heard speculation that you know, libraries may not survive in the age of Google and Amazon. But I love to point out that libraries and librarians are more valuable than ever. And one of my favorite quotes from author Neil Hayman, Google will bring you back a hundred thousand answers. A librarian will bring you back the right one. So yes, we do have very many folks coming to us for, for help finding information. And libraries continuously adapt to meet changing needs. And that's part of why we're here today, to make sure that we continue to do that. A little bit about our structure and resources. We are a city operated library. It's also a member of the Clackamas County Library District. Our annual operating budget is just over five million and roughly two thirds of that comes from the county library district. We have a permanent tax rate of thirty-nine cents per one thousand in assessed value. And then another third of our funding comes from the city general fund. And we also receive about fifty thousand dollars a year in grants from the friends of the library. Our facility opened in nineteen eighty-three. The total is just over twenty-seven thousand square feet and three floors. It's almost all open space. We just have one info space, which is a small conference room. We're well-staffed. We have thirty-three point seven FTE. That stands for full-time equivalent. So we do have more employees. But that's the calculation for full-time equivalent. We are open seven days a week, including weekends. So definitely need a large crew to be able to provide all the services for all of the community members that come in and want to borrow materials, ask questions, attend events. And we're also assisted by a great group of volunteers in the last year, over nine thousand volunteer hours. Just an amazing group. And our collections are vast. We have a very large collection in the library, over three hundred thousand items held locally. That includes print materials and digital materials. And then through our, through our district, through our relationships with other libraries, you can access millions of materials through the library. And we also have a range of technology available for folks. And just a quick overview of our services. Again, we're open seven days a week. We're a safe, welcoming and free third place for the community to come and, and be and feel welcomed and feel a sense of belonging. We also serve as a warm man cooling shelter for the community. And we have a wonderful staff. I have to brag for just a moment that the, our library was ranked number one in customer service among city departments. And we have overall our city departments ranked very high compared to other cities, but library was number one. So again, my, my staff at the library, thank you to them for providing great customer service. Um, oops, wasn't ready to go. Okay. We provide many early literacy and education support services, including the Books for Babies Program, one thousand books for kindergarten. And we're involved with the Oregon Battle of the Books and supporting that program in the schools. We have the homeschooling curriculum resources, book talks for educators, exam proctoring, many different services there. Already mentioned our references and research help services. We also provide personalized reading recommendations. A lot of folks that, you know, have finished their favorite series and need help figuring out where, what book to pack open next. In addition to the technology equipment in the library, we offer services, including technology assistance, one-on-one. We have laptops to borrow in-house or in a library of things collection. There's other technology to grow as well, including Wi-Fi hotspots. We also have poking lot Wi-Fi service and wireless printing. We also offer outreach services in the community, including homebound delivery. We also continue to offer curbside pickup and materials by mail. We have storyline recordings, which are very popular, folks that might be able to come in to the library for a program, probably want to do both. We give presentations out to senior living communities, up to private schools, daycares, preschools, as well as LOSD. Whenever we can, we love to visit classes or have them come to the library for tours. So it's always a pleasure when there's a group of kids coming through the library and seeing the kind of scenes. We have pop-up libraries. We started a program this year with Rover to again, bring the library out to the community. Also in the last year have had a number of story walks where we had public, you know, pages of stories published and threw them and put in the park so that people could enjoy those while they're out enjoying our beautiful parks as well. And then of course, borrow books, places that hold retail items, all of those borrowing services as well. Lots, lots of things. And more about our in-house library collections, the obvious, of course, we do have books, newspapers, magazines, maps. But you may, may or may not know that we also have large print materials, graphic novels for all ages, board books, leveled readers, audiobooks, music and films. We have a lucky day collection. So things that are have very long hold lists. You might just have a lucky day and it would just be there free to borrow right now at the library. We also again have that library of things collection that I mentioned that includes all kinds of materials. I'm ranging from musical instruments, kitchen appliances. You know, there's like stud finders and things you might need for your house, craft tools, educational toys and games. There's a huge collection for children. Actually, there's a whole new display area downstairs so that you can, you can show off all of those things for, for youth as well. And again, that collection also includes technology, laptops, Wi-Fi hotspots and Kindles that are preloaded for kids, teens and adults. And we also have some new collections coming soon. Our world languages collection is on the shelf, but very sparse. We're doing a lot of interviewing and reaching out with the community to understand what those resource needs are as we continue to grow our world languages collection. And we are also launching a seed library this spring. So we're excited to bring that to the community soon. And again, through resource sharing, you can access even more through the library. We also have many digital collections and resources and connecting to online resources, you can get access to cultural classes. That's what we call getting like a free pass to go to a museum or park for cultural venue in the area. Of course, we have ebooks, downloadable audiobooks and magazines, streaming videos through Canopy and high-quality databases such as Consumer Report and Ancestry. And we do have an app both for the library system to look up things, place them on hold, check your account, as well as the Libby app, which is your go-to place for all of those. Your go-to place for all of those uh ebooks, the audiobooks, and the magazines. Um, we also have digital resources specifically for kids, including Booklets, Nat Geo Kids. Um, Gale and Context Elementary, and there's actually a long list of databases for adults too, but. You can ask me later if you want want that list. Now, we also have a local history database that includes documents and photos. Of La Causa Vigo's history, which is an amazing resource. Uh, and coming soon, we're adding Mango Languages, um, that's going to be available starting March first. Language learning database. So what's available online? Um, you you may be interested to know that forty percent of the materials borrowed from the library are digital and about sixty percent are print materials. And we have tons of events at the library and we work with many partners to bring events to the community. So we do have limited event space in the library. Very grateful to the friends of the library, uh, again, for providing that annual funding. That is our main source of funding for classes and events, including La Causa Vigo Reads. Um, we're entering our seventeenth year this year. Uh, it's it's an amazing program and always excited to see all of the. Different synergies that happen each year with La Causa Vigo Reads. Uh, we also have uh age-appropriate storytimes for babies, ones, toddlers, and preschoolers. And recently, uh, with the help of the Friends Funding, we've been able to add storytimes in Mandarin, Spanish, um, sign language, baby sign language. And we just uh launched the Global Stories Project as well, that will bring storytimes with different languages each month. Many other children's classes and events, including um our ongoing art bar. Just like uh, anytime you want to come into the library and do arts and crafts, that's what that's all about down in the children's library. We have Lego Club. Uh, many special performances. Uh, I'm sure all of you with kids have. Found Waldo many times in the library. It's a very popular one as well, and that goes um. Supports our Hunger Fighters Program books that can send home to families that need them. We have a lot of teen classes and events, including the Teen Foot Club and Teen Advisory Board, and our Teen Advisory Board's doing awesome things right now and bringing even more. Programs to the community, um, including a new uh knitting club, which has been gaining a popularity. Uh, and of course, we have the Summer Library Challenge. That's for all ages. Adult classes and events include uh monthly music programs, author nights, trivia. We have book and film discussion groups, our Pints from the Past programs, the local history, the pub kind of uh fun experience. Different lectures, presentations, arts and crafts events, performing arts events. So there's always something going on at the library. And we also have cultural events and celebrations. And someone mentioned our Lunar New Year program that was a few weeks ago and was just an amazing event at the library. And we also offer um technology and workforce development classes, such as resume writing, online searching, or introduction to Microsoft Word or Excel. Um, and depending on interest, we those those vary. So that's just a quick, oh, and I think. Oh, I was already on the library marketing PR side. Okay. So just a little bit, so you know, some of the activities that we have participated in to get the word out about our programs. We use social media. We include a monthly press release. We have a twice. Excuse me, a twice monthly email newsletter for folks that have subscribed to that. It's about um between seven and eight thousand people that that goes to. Um, we also use all of the city's channels to get the word out. We do have a new cardholder email series as well to let new cardholders know what the library offers. We offer um recommendation services through Miss Reads. And a lot of in-house displays also let people know what the library has to offer. We display new items. Uh, rotating displays on a variety of topics, including cultural and social recognitions. While we try to do a lot of face-out displays in the stacks and find that. A lot of our circulation, a lot of the materials that are picked up and borrowed are things that we've put out on display. So we're constantly restocking those. We also have Pinterest boards for uh, but they're digitally browse. And you can just click right on the book cover and go straight to the item in the catalog and place it on hold. So that's a really uh often way as well to find materials. We also have curated book lists um in print and our digital signboard in the library lobby floor. Thank you. So that's just a really brief overview of. One month library today.
So before we take a break, that's nice. And thank you, Melissa. That was wonderful. We asked Melissa to provide brief overview. We're not going to be talking about the library very much. Um, but we wanted to stir the soup to remind everybody, oh, yeah, I use the library for this, but. Oh, I didn't know they did that. And oh, my gosh, they do that. And we we already know the library is well-used, well-loved. Respected and does a lot. And so we're not here to evaluate the library. We're here to really think about. Where we go with this wonderful library and this wonderful community. So. We're going to take a break. When we come back, we are going to ask you. To not to kind of put the library aside for a minute and go up. And think about the community and your vision for the community. Um, and you you will have received, and it's just absolutely fortuitous that the council. Just adopted this future vision. Uh, everybody, Kathy Kopp, you literally hung up the press. If you don't, they're right by the door. They they told yesterday, I think, when it was approved by council. We always start our conversation about the vision with a community. Uh, because. Not every library is the same. My communities are different and they have different needs and they have different challenges. They have different opportunities. They have different assets. And we want to put this in the context of this community, this conversation. So please take a break. Um, try to scan this if you haven't had an opportunity to do that. We're not going to critique it. We're going to move on to what you said about the vision. Uh, but. Because we have this, we wanted, we couldn't not use this opportunity to share with you. Okay, so let's take about ten minutes and then come back.
It's quite a good listening on the uh. All first and largest and everyone wants big advantage on the bright minds and all the energy that's in the room. Uh, and of course, we always yes and yes and approach. We want to hear, we want to build off it. We want to get as many ideas as possible. Possible can we still uh?
Yes, for the. Just to see like mental so the question. Is there anything that is potentially in or out of scope? Like, is there anything in terms of the future that is? Off limits or like, no, we're not considering JHSVR or like, just trying to ask if there is any limitations to your mind.
None of what's on.
Great question.
Not about that, but for the great question. Yes. And and I we've realized that things will come up, you know, with. Problem is, you know, was. The city has all kinds of barriers and physical geographic barriers and all that, and that might lead to something where we are. But we we don't even want to go to the library yet. We we really, if you can, stay away from the library. We'll get to it. Let's just talk about your vision, who had with the city council or who were necessarily. Adopted, but you know, so maybe you have that as. As a backdrop. We're not going to cheat it. It's there. But maybe it stimulates something in you about, here's my vision. Or you might say, I totally agree with that vision. You know, so. Uh, I'm really, we are very interested in hearing from you. When you say about this community's twenty, twenty-five years ago, on the way there. Well, on the way there. What is, what is your vision? What do you want to say about? Yeah.
And we were just talking about how nice it would be to have a shuttle that is going to, it sounds like a bump in the road, but the shuttle is the tower.
So transportation is is an issue in La Causa Vigo?
Public transportation.
Okay. So. Talking about some of the barriers that sometimes present themselves, no matter what is about the library or anything else. What other thing? We get prompted a little bit because I've, we've interviewed a lot of people yesterday.
One of the things that's really uh. How I'm doing is there's no center center. People seem is part of town is the center, but down the dot all the west side.
So maybe in your vision, I don't think that's working around what I'm saying. You'd like to see a center there.
Kind of, yeah, it feels like we know there's a. You know, rings together and everything.
Okay, okay.
So I don't. It's all all the time, but it's just got.
Great teaching. Okay, that was sense of everybody being together. Okay, right. Yeah, the sense of everybody being together. And you mentioned there, the way you put it, uh, we were speaking the way you put it in the first. That that uh. There were the divides, I guess.
Yeah, there's the east side and the west side of the river, or north side and the south side of the lake. There's always that fear around, okay, so it's still. Okay, it isn't familiar, but it's kind of far. Far north, far west side of it.
Right, right, okay.
Other than that. One of the things I love about the community and that I would like to insist. Is the way you can have beautiful recreation and then go to the library and then go to some shops. I mean, like. There's a, that's almost the opposite of what you're saying, but I do, I love going down the foothills and then heading up to the libraries. And then going around and getting a coffee or something.
I'm sorry, I'm distracted by that.
That's okay. I mean, like, like recreation, because we do have a lot of. And recreation nearby, things like the library and services. Check.
Still. All right, what else? Yes.
Hi, Angel. Everybody going to that twenty-five years in the future, one of educating kids now and it's more collaborative process than a lecture process. And I would like to see more collaborative spaces, um, meeting rooms, uh, places where people can get together and work together.
And what's, what's, what is your concern about that? Why?
Because if we're educating all these kids to work collaboratively, that means related adults, that is the way they are going to be accustomed to working. And that's how they're going to be, their, that's their needs in the future.
I want to build on that, actually. One of the things I was thinking about, and actually, this is a thing I deal with a lot of work, where. People that I work with who don't live near physical office, they love to work in the library, but certain roles that. Say they have to take phone calls or something, they don't, they can't take them to the library, but they they need a space to work where they can focus, where they may be present, where they can have community. And also do your job. And so I think having kind of like a mix of. Just to me, when I think of a library, you know, a quiet space, but I want it to be community, so. Understanding that there's different ways that people would want to use it, that there might be. The capacity for focus, but also the capacity for community and how you're going to able to say that, so.
Yes, uh, I would just like to. You know, liberty. Uh, whatever, sure, thanks, but also like just work intergenerational meeting space. There's so much experience that I've got just from people who have lived here a long time, you know, people who have much more life experience than I have, like, you know, finding one of the down. Uh, they're currently just achieving, uh, they younger generation, collaborate and.
Will you talk, which doesn't become a fair amount of collaboration? So what is that about? I I hear it as about teaching. People, little people grow in the food model, who can collaborate and then we get down and good things, right? What else? What is that about? Is that collaboration and community things? You try to put that into a vision, yes. What is that component to it?
There's just like a lot of these things, you know, where you, when you have a space, that's a good space, a cloud through space, where people go. Like they can share, read, share, storytelling. One of the uh scenarios that I actually like is during farmer's market and you're waiting for your food or you're waiting to buy something. I, the person next to me, oh, that looks like, wait, how? Where did you get that? Or when I'm waiting for my reference or whatever in the food area. They're like, I'm talking to people who I know. Very interesting, intergenerations too, a few old people with little kids. And it felt like the farmers market, it's a great vision network. Like that mix, right? Marketplace wandering around. Plausible, you know, so this open space, like, for when I don't know, I could be like. I get so many people. It's just like this kind of connecting people. That feeling of a sense of community and connection and safety and uh, so. I don't know.
Sure.
Awesome.
People who want to play top. Silent, like, the kid, like, honestly, so, or like, next to the house, I'm like, Alex, you know, being able to be with people. People around. Like, super helpful, because, I like.
Using that, it's why it's. We're going to have, right, three people, three people.
Yep, both great, that's a late one, yeah.
One of the places where people, in your community, where people are isolated, yes, you're coming, this is already a place, I love downtown library. I use it at a coffee bar. And I would, what a great way to generate TV. Buzz for other visions and I just. Racing my mind from the the library of downtown, good, um, but to have a. People likes cafe space, workspace, and also uh having. Older parents that they see here, a place where they could go that's not the senior center, you know? Yeah, and dad loves to look at other children playing and babies and and uh maybe in that cafe area. One of the buddy that's at school, if somebody's really, just wants to yuck it up or share, they sit at that table and it's all those other. Sit at that table. And that would reach that gap of community and belonging and uh, my dad's like, now I'm a senior, so go to the seniors' center, and I go to the library. You know? I don't know, but let me get this, it's not grandkids and moms and dads and, you know. You think I, but. So to make, that would generate income, our library. There's four blocks to get a coffee. And so maybe even a little window, sort of an outdoor space. That people can use for work. They might be able to take balls. You know, you can name it. Oh, pretty much, okay. We stood our little legs six feet of work. We understood the assignment. So at the library, you'd say, this is the whisper room, this is this and that and that, so all. You know, outside space, a place, space, a place to share, starts here, the. The coffee vision, we have changing and, you know. Been to display all of our beautiful art that we have, silent. But. Be quite a lot of this town, and it's still, I wish, so, you know, a great thing. So I agree, yeah.
So one of the things I would. One thing I had noticed is that as the community has grown. RBNH has also bought it. There are a lot of seniors, so, but there are seniors who are now living in senior communities within La Causa Vigo. There's a lot more senior communities here now than were here when I first here in seventy. And uh, they don't want to be stuck there. They're lovely communities and they have all kinds of lovely facilities. But they want to get out. And I think this intergenerational. Thing is, is really what it's about, uh, learning to uh. Give and take with people who are not like yourself, who are differently aged, who, now all kids have their grandparents around. Now grandparents have their grandkids. Can't all be uh school volunteers and go in and help kids read. Uh, but I think that this is, this is a way to continue to forge that. And research, and that's where these people have been. Our social connection, even with social connection, I can.
We grew that base. Do the little kids, and so they. Allowing those spaces to flourish, like the coffee houses of, you know, the nineties where there wasn't, wasn't profit or so. Give them, and so, they, they, allowing those spaces to flourish, like the coffee houses of, you know, the nineties where there wasn't, wasn't profit, so libraries, they, fertile ground for, uh, ideas and idleness and creativity.
Okay, ideas and idleness.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, you know?
Yeah.
Our secondary, so, you know, you have that downtime in the library, you learn, you are rested as well as a, as a inspiration, so like-minded people there. What a great resource.
Really hard to, when you, seeing as I'm a reason, it's really easy, it's really hard to meet other people, especially when you have small children. It's not, if you correlate to some point theater day or at some point having pockets, it's really hard to even know how to meet other people in the community. I mean, even higher people who live in, in my neighborhood, it's almost like, you almost want to stop when people are going on walks, because you're like, hi, you, you, okay, we, we, do you need a ride? So I, I have mentioned that too, of like that.
Yeah.
Stop, how, or if you have a dog.
So, yeah, I'm trying to, you know, I am not, it's, but, we're, to be social, it's, yeah. It's all, all the, yeah, people, and, you know, like, this, I turn into littles, for, you know, proper people, for my, I don't have any, it's a little, we don't have this day, but, you know, free, like, now, there's that, so, it's, you know, we guys, we get older, that, like, so, seeing kids are beautiful and to create an environment where it's not profit-driven, or you're going to send a scam, we're going to de-mit, can't afford the senior living center that goes on those wonderful trips. So to be accessible for every socioeconomic thing, which is wonderful. And you think, you know, some places you can't go, I don't have a coffee, it's five dollars, so if you're on limited incomes, but I love that, we have, she'll be there, so.
Yes, well, yes, even like, I've probably told you, or, you know, based, is, um, maybe, more, more, people that have, are, that people have, they don't, uh, have, or they can, prepare to, these things, and, you know. Yes, uh, I'm going back to the conversation, where there's a, that's what I'm thinking of, for, it was, it was, a lot. Like, there's a thing of another hand of words, there's a shuttle. Yes, so I'm in that demographic, you think about getting older, and I'm dead there, and, no, and I wouldn't want to just go to the senior, to see the little babies. We're in a place where it's, it's sort of, we're in a different range, where I'm wanting to be in a space where you can connect with people. Uh, I love the idea of the cafe, because, I mean, we, like, looks, you know, thinking about, you don't see more, so, so, you're going to kind of hang out and, uh, you know, and, and be able to connect with kids, with different people and, and, you know, have a conversation. So, uh, I think, so, space-wise, uh, well, the demographic standing right there is, and then also maybe events or, uh, different programming for older people, I mean, I love this, uh, and then.
Being on a line, you still, you know, get very intense.
I'm sorry?
Being on a bus line, having to stop right, yeah, uh, they just, can't hold, they're just like, sell, sell shorts, and, well, usage, and so, a lot of people used to have to walk down the hill to the transit of here, so I think you choose those, try your environmental, financial, or whatever, you know, bus line, it can make amazing. And even, I walk, it might be a lot for somebody who needs this.
So, Lake Oswego has a population of about forty-one thousand right now, um, when we think about twenty, twenty-five years out, you think Lake Oswego's going to stay that time?
Well, their new, their new plan of having to, uh, change from a single-family neighborhood, uh, is, is going to increase density in Lake Oswego. But there's no place for it to continue to grow out and expand, and so I think that will be an interesting change. I know my years on council, we talked all the time about shuttles and that, because that's always been an issue in Lake Oswego. And, um, Lake Oswego was formed by Oswego and Lake Grove coming together as two communities become one. And the lake is always going to be in the middle of it, and so how do you bring people around? And I can, I, I was just thinking, you know, we talk about shuttles, and some people have tried the new shuttle service around the lake and, and that kind of thing, I think, but, you know, going to be moving more into electric vehicles, and there are a lot of places where they have chores that go around on electric, uh, trolley type of things. Maybe electric shuttle trolley service around the community would be less expensive and it obviously doesn't go in, in the same way. Uh, and you might be able to find a way to create more of a business, uh, because that is never something that the city could do, or it was too expensive. And so maybe that's something that could, you know, or be incentive to do that.
Yeah, I don't think, well, yes. We might think about, increase the density recipe and also just the population expanding, or one thing that sticks out from that about this mission is open and welcoming for different backgrounds, different abilities, and the people are very compassionate to people. And honestly, when I thought about moving back, where I want to start my family, that was a bit of a turn, and I want my kids to grow up somewhere where there isn't that diversity in the part of their life. So I am curious, and also, hopefully, that we can be a more welcoming community, I don't have a solution, I don't have anything identified that triggers tall.
Yes, yeah.
But I am just very clearly aware that we are open to that, like, straight, very diverse, what we saw on the slides that flashed up, just percentages of populations, and it didn't really, honestly, wouldn't hit away, because library, there's barely seen, however, so, that's something that sticks out, again, not coming with a solution, can't even tell you all the various problems, but I would say my vision for our future of community would be to be welcoming, at least, and not.
Welcoming of a more diverse.
Yeah.
I mean, is that what you mean, or, yes, or?
And I think that's part of the, the hope that comes with creating more housing opportunities in different ways, instead of all the single-family models that sit on very expensive cases of property. So I think that for that, um, create a different kind of income, um, requirement to live here.
Well, yeah, I thought of the like, um, kind of sort of, um, which is my, then your problem is is just how over aggressive the community is to solve the way that we're approaching that community. Um, like population and how very long as you know, a lot of us talking about like other focuses coming out of that piece of, and so it's, um, it can be very hard to get, um, we call it to be, be there now. For me, we need to follow. That well, that were you, you are stating that in a mission, David, you like the same. Even if you said, uh, I'd like to see this. Find the problem for she to. Eric, question, okay, that's a little bit of that. But thinking, thinking the whole. Yes, I think you started with not having started together.
Erin, you got it. Maybe you want to maybe go do something else. It's very, it's changed. Listen. So the deepest fear of skin, big trigger. Uh. The other piece, I guess, is how, I think it's sort of like, like my parents are in Hillsborough. Different kinds of libraries feel, in some of them, I would be like, it feels a lot easier. Where it's almost like people who don't have the resources that, that they might need, they have a role still in there. So while we do have full base for kids, without including the staff, um, I think there's also really few things to do in these things. In some, just mistakes that people can hear that I'm acting in a free video.
Well, actually, one of the things that I was really sad about when I moved to Portland, which I was really looking forward to, which we kind of had like a five year plan. Portland was one of the children's museums I love.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Oregon's kind of, I always kind of wish I had a passion to bring your children. Because I think it's really great. For all the reasons that we're saying, I think like after before, um, openness and creating a space is curiosity. And I love hearing that that is part of the, is the statement of the library. Because I think if we're not curious about other people from other cultures or different parts of life, we don't know that we've been done how understanding we, we, we tend to get really isolated. So I love, for me, it starts with our kids. Like, it's so much harder to retrain generations. First, how do we empower the next generation also to sort of improvise? But in school, without having any conversation, even if it is one, I think. Um, so in my mind, like, use these spaces, because see that's what the museum is in a way. How do we play together? How do we meet? How do we be creative? How do we mature the agenda? Um, and I think wow, that's why I could see that being a really interesting component that is missing in our greater community today.
Awesome. Yeah. So one of the things we keep saying in the education system, we're teaching people to learn, to unlearn, to relearn, to keep learning. And what we're hearing through the business community is the only way you're going to keep your workforce is if you educate them. There is really no place to have a classroom to educate and re-educate and educate and do everything. So I would like to see classrooms in the future to keep, because this is a lifelong work of duty. Here at Harvard University, there you can be in order.
And you, and you can see the opposite of words in your house, which are going to change that statement. Part of your vision is you want to see that.
Yeah, and that's all those things. Says, I'm stop, I'm a wolf. Yeah.
So it's a community that has lifelong learners. You want to see that in your vision and that still happens. Yes. Great barrier. Other.
Yes, to sort of tie together that idea and what you were saying earlier. Um, we have a library of things and we have a library of books, a library of ideas and expertise would be amazing. I think this is a community where the value of giving back and solidarity is huge. Um, but what if you teach and we want to keep learning, how can we offer the resources of our symbols to spaces for whomever is retraining, learning or working? Um, it happens to be the human potential we have here to serve and.
Thank you. Go ahead and comment. Yes, this sustainability is really valid in this community as to how people work out and single down. Well, you need them to have access to stuff because they can't store anything. It's more smaller spaces. So if, if we're going to expand the museum of stuff or the library. What is that? Stuff.
Yeah, I mean, imagine like in the coffee, the coffee shop, when Najee and her family coming for a day night where they're checking out board games, playing at the cafe. Like, I would love to do that. When I saw that, I was like, hey, why do we have board games? What have I been missing out on? There's just the idea that like not only being able to get something at the library, but use it at the library is really cool.
Very good. Yes. Yes, that's one that has to be, be like getting in the library. But that's, that's like, that's. Right in the library and do it. Right. Well, I, I want to finish, I want to do a plus one, Katie, as well as, I remember seeing a story about a library working with people. I actually worked on it and say, play on. And you can actually sit down with them. Yeah. I know, yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's one of the things that I love, but things you just, you know, this. Makes you excited. What do you do as a hobby? Like, how do you get home there? And, you know? What makes you, I mean, it's just one of those things where I'm like, what do you think? Because yeah, with someone who she wants to stare, they're still great and.
Well, it's like a story core.
Uh, yeah, but this one is like, you could check someone out.
Yeah, the library doesn't have to chase them down the street.
Yeah. I'm like, you get this guy's idea of like having sewing machines where there might be someone in the community who really loves and knows how to sew. Like, I'm like this, I'm like chasing down my aunt a little bit our way. Like, please teach me how to sew. I'm teaching myself over here. Like, just that kind of access. And there are, I'm sure so many people that would want to teach that. And so just like.
The ability to connect skills to impress that or like.
Yes.
Pressed, yes. Would you kind of look? I, there is a fine, I think, here for leaving a, and he actually trained skills too. And so like, I came up someone like change on the door or like, you know, do some video recording at a knock. And like, and like, he just gets so excited because he is, he is a worker. And like, he loves doing, you know, audio. To charity and so like, and I'm just written on the call was like, straight, you know, meeting people. I'm meeting and my husband kind of has some of that and I kind of mean, sending your neighbors into the. People are like, these words.
Under tap.
Library field based. Society and out for seasons and also giving them things to share. We're not sure.
I think the common ideas that the libraries have been doing, the common story places and, and that kind of thing. They've grown that idea because I know it's always been difficult to find second location, satellite library type of things. And, and why it really was important when they moved, uh, old return places from, from the, because people were so used to being able to go and return their books there. Um, so I don't know. Those are all kinds of, I keep thinking of your library in your hand, but we're talking about so much more.
Oh, yeah.
Out of, you know, yeah, shooting for anything and finds something that, you know, do you trust that person? Trust that source and have you gotten really where you wanted to go? And I think being able to connect with your neighbors, with people who don't know, but, but feel, boy, he has some experience with that. And will know that and ask them. Um, and I think my generation, we're learning, we still didn't learn everything in school, but we're learning a lot more now. If we're listening to it, you know, it's been very important. And I think to share that with younger generations that got to continue to keep their mind open. Do you think one of the resources that you're trying to learn is that with your friends you have, like, and your friend, so you have a lot of your time to do that?
Um. Believe me, we're going to get to be mine. We have a lot of pleasure. Yeah. Opportunity to connect and continue to grow. Yeah. Not, not just stay. I mean, I can sit and read a book every day for hours and hours and hours and nobody's going to bother me and nobody's going to care whether I'm doing it or not. That's not what I want to do in libraries, friends, to see. It's, it's a place to engage. It's why, it's why clubs grow, is why different kinds of, um, groups around particular thing. And I think the cultural idea is what's so extremely important that we haven't had. Uh, so it's been in the last few years, we brought cultural opportunities into like that community and share what's going on. I remember when I was junior, I was always. But it wasn't here at all in the last couple of years. So, I mean, I think that this has been a very, uh, community that didn't really reach out, but I think it has changed enough that it is integrated for that. So, uh, so you do, if you wanted to, any of these ideas that you want, a lot of, I love the idea, but what I'm really concerned about is competing is say, you know, when I go into Portland, you know, waiting to get back because you are. And, you know, it's like, how do we, how do we treat this community, our library safe? So I always feel that way. And that's how I agree. Oh, I know.
So you're saying, but so.
Yeah. Well, I think the question for the future is, he's named the safe community. There's our, and cleaning, and cleaning. You know, our, from here, you know, when you build, teach our other, other city is. There was, you know, we had somebody sitting like me saying that, you know, to maintain the standards. We can enter the community has a lot. Where you can, you know, the quality of kids is high. Education level for people is high. Safety is relatively high. So, so these qualities that are described, this are usually, we want to see those perpetuated and. Yeah. Well, we're at, uh, we have a time for a couple of our comments, but if we're right about that time, we're going to take a break. And then come back into the little, I have some struggling course before you take off your break. So you can see it all it, um, and could do advance. This slide. Make these finish this story here.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we've, we've, we've been working on this, peer review, we gather the families, we need community opportunities. We cover a lot of that and we'll keep talking about this through our, you know, the differences, different new world dreams. But, but we will keep our conversation going about the gen needs and so forth. But, um, what I would like you to do in the next segment, just to get out, we'll take one more than half an hour. So we have time to record out what we did. I'd like you to, um, break into groups, five groups of three. And so we'll do a count, like one, two, three, one, two, three, one. Um, in a minute. And then what I'd like you to do is just wander around during a break. Um, and read everything that's up here. And write down, well, could you go to the next slide? Thank you. This is what you're going to do. You're going to count off, create a group, you're going to walk around and review the wall charts. And look for up to three, or whatever, you know, what you described, four or five rules. We don't have to need warrants on there. Maybe there's six statements on there that equal something bigger for you. I mean, I think I'm saying it's three rules, three rules of the library. In the community, when you think about the unity that you want now into the future, okay, ten, fifteen years now, forty years. When you read all those ideas, some are about the library, some are about the community. What are the two, three? Big, bigger ideas that would say to you, oh, I think this is a goal for the library. So my happy housing was opened up there for my people. I don't want to conclude, but just, I'm really interested in each individual. Will you get these coming up with your three? And then we'll get into the groups, the libraries from three, and you can talk about that a little bit together. We'll take, uh, we'll wrap that up and have a report out. And we'll be recording what we think about those. What are those things that are involved? Is that fair? I'm ready. Right. Now let's have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Gee, you're being taught. All right. Now you remember. That's three of them.
Yes.
School, school.
Yeah.
And I, I, I. No, we're trying to, now, okay, five, six, now, how do you try and get them there? You can see, give me five rooms. So. One, two. The shoes are going to get out, the ones there, the jeans there, the threes here. Or, and this is, oh, I should have done five. Okay, should we do five?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, one, two, three, four, over. My, one. Chances are, four. Okay.
Two, three, four, five, six, we're reading our hand writing.
Can you have?
I'll probably bring it to you after. I don't have an opportunity to. Probably clarify, uh, once I have one time to go over the internet, okay? Uh, here's time to go over. Uh. Well, please make it time for a break though. If you can at least go back and watch that time being done by me. Be the back five, and then I can set it, but write your groups and start the inside of it really quick.
Wandering around. I'd rather do that. This is.
My thing, but. One of the things you talked about was like a community access point or the community, so like the analogy being this will get you into the plus, but you're not actually going to be able. Um, the second part is a space that inspires curiosity, not only physically, but also what's up there. Um. We don't, I don't. I think, I think those are the two we're going to.
They did some good, but two, that hurts because. Oh, the two that we wrote down were community access point slash lobby and space that inspires curiosity. Well done, uh, team, routine, group four.
Group four. The role of the library is to be a community center, a cultural hub, offering something for everyone in all ages. Our second role is the library should be trusted source for learning, information and ideas. And the first one is libraries should be, the role to be more accessible for everybody. And what that means is about transportation, the library should have a GPS everywhere there.
Great job, guys. I want to ask Mr. Ford. He didn't know for video. I think we've got that. Great job, buddy. Uh, Chris.
Oh. It was great specifically having. One lady, you have. This is the first step in, um, shocking and I would share the safety for young adults. And so part of that kind of library safety is being used as, and so that was something that also you agree. I mean, I truly be a place for young adults to, um, have a teen life theme place. And area that's represented in the best demographic, um, you know, middle school, high school, uh, going off to college area that has a whole vibe to it compared to baby section or, you know, the lesson section. So a teen area, something that is the energy of our babies to their, you know, the conqueror for that. Or and then transgene, especially here in the old three, four. I would, you know, um, and I have a thing of maybe involves old shared that having that activity must go to libraries. Protection with transportation and getting a multiple visioning and making it accessible for all. Yeah.
Anything you want to add?
God, guys, put a hand around. And, uh, group two.
I am communicating, uh, our three roles. One was an intergenerational community building or networked state. And then number two was, uh, basically locker and exchange ideas with culture. And then three was you collaborate and work space.
Awesome. Good job, guys. Put a hand up. And group one.
That's the last of the phase that we marked out of our year's day. But, uh, one big umbrella that was from lots of these, the polygamy of accessibility, whether that was transportation or ideas or the resources that are provided, they have to be accessible. Um, the other was intergenerational was the advert that we used to put connection to the, uh, the law and there was, uh, which a community to it. And then number three, we, we. We wrote, so a lot of things really have brought up. Um, lifelong learning, learning across stages, uh, whether that was sort of sustainability or educational pieces, but there was this continuum of learning.
Yeah. Awesome. Every group did great. Uh, how about hand for group one? Outstanding. So we're just finishing up reporting, but if you guys want to go ahead and give the feedback, Cam, where we're at, so we gave the five month next back. There you go. Wrap off.
All right. Very fair. So next step, we, um, we are going to take more ideas. We are using both of the library during transportation, during the special role of the library. Through the staff, there's an internal library planning here. We're doing that in the morning and we're going to go over, uh, kind of review what we did today. And then we're going to, uh, screen them to consider those goals. And then to do a kind of a scorecard, work sheet, report card on, uh, how well positioned the library is now to do these things. They, you know, they'll recognize a lot of these things, things that they're doing, but, but to think about in the future, how well is the library positioned in four resource categories? Uh, staffing, collections, technology and facilities. So we'll get, uh, we'll get that information from staff. They know best about these things. And we'll be bringing that back to you for the next. So I talked before about defrogging. Um, we are repeating everything with that. We're showing them what you did and then they're going to do stuff and then we're going to have you. And meanwhile, uh, JR, who Jason mentioned, Jason and I and the rest of our team will be looking at all of the input data that we're getting. Uh, Jason mentioned there are over seven hundred, so far, uh, conversation points and we'll be looking at that, analyzing that, adding to that. And, uh, when we come back and meet with you next month, it will be especially to focus on what did the staff say about that three goals and how well does the library feel and is, how well is the library positioned to fulfill those goals? And part of that analysis will include the architect, we mentioned earlier, David, who will have done the physical assessment of the facility. And he will be there to talk about that and also to share, and we will have to share lots of ideas, slides about libraries. Some of you know about them, libraries from Afghanistan and other places, right? And, and all kinds of, so we've all seen libraries all over. What we have done, and this is a collective of visuals that we can share with you. Um, and David will be doing that too. And you'll take the work of this group just a little bit further in that next session. We're going to be beginning to really, um, fashion a framework for a vision. As well, we'll be doing that from the data that we're collecting. Sound okay? Sound good? All right. Um, well, that's, back to you.
Yeah, I just have a few closing remarks for you all. And please, we're going to get you out of here this night, which is always a, always a good thing. But first, I just want to thank each and every one of you for your ideas and insights and questions today. Um, for taking the time again out of your busy schedules to participate with us in this process and really help to set this vision for, uh, serving the community for generations to come. And we're again so grateful, uh, to you all for participating with us and excited to continue working with you through May as we continue the visioning process. Um, and so we'll be meeting again, same time, same place next month, Thursday, March ninth. Um, been very excited to continue this work. So thank you again and have a wonderful evening. Thanks again for a great. Awesome job. And thank all of you for being here and sharing.
We tell your friends, all about the, get forward the links and prior information, please, please do.
Sure, we send an email to all the materials.
Yes, and we will send an email out to you with the slide deck and then the digital versions of these two, if you want to. We'll do those out digitally.